So next on the agenda is item 8.1.2, A Process for Regressing Declining Enrollment in the District, and an update on the Superintendent's Elementary Declining Enrollment Task Force. So we'll begin with the report from the superintendent, and then we'll have questions from the board, and then we'll time the public comment and final comments from the board. So here's one, two.
Can I, can I ask you if you can use your microphone? If you can, I'm a little hard of hearing. I can stand up here too if that's easier, but...
Absolutely. We'll use the microphones.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet.
I have it. Thanks. So good evening. And tonight I am going to bring before the board the presentation on how we will work to look at declining enrollment as a district and begin to make some decisions about how to address it. And we have some time-sensitive decisions that need to be made this summer because of our facilities master plan and construction projects that are in the queue that we may need to adjust based on our current enrollment projections. I want to start with our vision. We create and support learning environment that challenges enable students to achieve at their highest potentials. And we need to keep our kids at the center of all of our decision-making and our thinking about how we resolve the challenges that we're facing right now. You can see our elementary enrollment since 2015-16 has dropped precipitously. We've lost 15 elementary teachers in the last three years. As I announced at our last board meeting, the first step, our first step in looking at declining enrollment is going to be the enrollment task force, our elementary enrollment task force. We need to respond to the fact that families are leaving our community and that's had an impact on our school enrollments. As a community, we want to ensure we're responsible to taxpayers for their investments in our schools and that we're optimizing staffing and facilities resources to best serve our students. And that some of these decisions are time-sensitive because of the elementary facilities and bond projects that are in the queue. And we want to make good decisions and not overbuild. The purpose of the task force is to make recommendations to address declining enrollment, balancing elementary campus enrollment and optimizing facilities and staffing, again, to best serve our students and be responsible to the community. Some principles to guide the work of the task force. We want to protect and preserve all our learning communities and minimize disruptions as much as possible. We need to modify our facilities master plan to avoid excess district facilities. We need to optimize staffing and support resources. Some of this is redundant, I'm sorry, but trying to be, have clarity in purpose and principles. We want families to be able to go to schools in their neighborhoods if they choose to. We need to make decisions this summer, again, due to the pending bond projects. We want to strategically utilize our $68 million elementary facilities bond to repair and renovate existing buildings and replace portables as needed to house projected enrollment. And we don't want solutions to resulting increased cost. Ideally, we should be looking at reducing operating costs to measure with the reduction in our student enrollment, when we can. And that part is a little less urgent because of the budget news we have tonight is different than where our budget was looking at like two weeks ago. It's always a snapshot in time. So the composition of the task force, two parents for each of our five elementary schools, two teachers for each of our five elementary schools, a classified staff person for each elementary school. We're also including the secondary small schools campuses because they reside on an elementary campus, an elementary facility. One AFE parent, one additional BSS, 40 small schools parent, all of the elementary principals. It's going to be three trustees, the assistant superintendent for educational services and our elementary director of pre-k room instruction. Pat and I will be listeners and resource providers. So we'll be providing information, providing resources. And we're bringing Lisa Fraser in to serve as a facilitator for the task force.
Did you say her name was Lisa?
The timeline for the task force is set right now for three meetings in June. The goal is to find resolution by then. If we don't, we can come back to the table in August when staff returns after the July break and if we're not able to find solutions in that timeframe. But we will have a board study session. We need to have it in sometime late August or at latest early September because of bond decisions that need to be made. From long-term, looking at enrollment and in our declining enrollment situation, it's impacting our elementary district the most right now, but eventually the impact will have a greater impact on our secondary district. And we're going to need to be having ongoing conversations about how we are flexible and meeting the needs of our community and responding to the changes in our community. One way we might address that is expanding the budget advisory committee so that we're adding more parent reps to it so that we can review the data on enrollment in an ongoing way at the same time we review the budget data to make recommendations on optimizing, again, facilities and staffing to best serve students moving forward as our numbers change and as our population changes. So we're set to get started next week. And wanted you to have an opportunity to ask questions and the community to have opportunity to be as well.
Thank you very much. So following that report, then we would turn to our trustees and see if they have any questions or comments for superintendent. Yes, Claudia?
Since it begins next week, have you selected families and parents? And do you have all the pieces in place?
We have almost all of the pieces in place. We don't, we're still waiting on a couple of those positions to be filled, but we have most of them identified.
Yes, Patty?
So here now, what was the detailed process and who was involved? I mean, we've already assembled a committee. This might be something that could be really far-reaching. I'm not really sure on here that we've already assembled. What does that mean?
So the principals did outreach to the parent committees and they did outreach to faculties to get volunteers to participate.
Is this more than just school? I'm a little confused. Did we not want anybody outside of just our school system?
So when I shared when we last met that we would be looking for stakeholders from all the schools involved. So we have representatives from all of our schools on this task force.
So this is really a school committee full-time?
But it's from all, it's a district-wide committee because it's not just one school, it's all of our schools, all of our elementary schools. Not our middle or high schools, but if this impacts, it impacts the elementary district facilities and the Measure B bonds.
But if I might, Patty, were you trying to indicate that it was school only and not community-wide? Was that the focus of your question?
Yeah, I was just curious. I'm hoping to hear from a wide variety. And a little bit off of this is just that this process is very quick, coming very quickly. Where it may land, I don't know. The decisions that have to be made, I don't know that they actually have to be made. No decision can be a decision. You know, there's lots of different varieties. It just made me think about, we just went through a process in determining by district voting. And we had a, we had a professional consultant in the area of what was going on with mapping. And I found it very helpful that we moved along to have a professional consultant because, one, he brought us the information. He brought us the information to the problem. And he presented it such that whatever decision we made was capable to whatever worked for our district. So I think this problem is a bit bigger than just elementary. I think these dollars are a lot more. And I think the implications are a lot more. So I'm happy to have a committee here. But I think we might be needing a facilitator, somebody who can really, you know, up and down the state. We have declining enrollment. We have areas that have present enrollment. I'm just wondering what the board thinks about that. The last process really helped to have the demonstrator. That was their specialty. Bonds were passed up and down the state. And there are professionals, consultants who do this, who can look from the 3,000-foot all the way down to the middle to say, okay, you know, taking into consideration how many sites? Your declining enrollment, your tax base, your teachers' needs, your students' needs. And I just think this is a lot more than a one-committee recommendation. And so I just wanted to put that out there as a thought for the board. You know, I like the demonstrator. And he was very neutral. And maybe he was quite happy for our process, looking at it from a much bigger scale because one movement and a recommendation is really a dominant effect in our district.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Jeremy first, and then you did. Thank you, Patty.
I may concur with Patty. What if the most elegant solution involves a middle school or a high school? Is that off limits? What if the most elegant solution involves the moving of a district office? Is that off limits? if it's only an elementary school committee, does that imply that only elementary schools will be looked at? There's no hurry worse than a hurry that gets it wrong. And yes, we have some bond items, million-dollar bond items, construction items on the table, but they can be shelved. And yes, they'll cost more when we come back to them, if we do come back to them in a year or two. But I think Patty makes a really good point. Declining enrollment isn't going to go away. This trend is going to continue. And I'm concerned that this is a rush. I don't feel rushed personally. I want to do the right thing by kids. I want to impact. Isn't that one of the criteria here? That minimize disruptions towards students, that sort of a thing? I don't know what the most elegant solution is going to be. And I don't know if it can be arrived at in four quick meetings. Maybe it takes a whole year. But, I mean, the cat's out of the bag. We have crisis. We have declining enrollment. Everyone knows it. Let's take our time and do it right. And that includes taking our time to think about the parameters of this, which I don't think have been fully thought through. By labeling it, forgive me for being long-winded, by labeling it simply an elementary enrollment task force, I think we do ourselves and the community a disservice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, DeeDee.
I have a question and a comment. My question is, these task force meetings are going to be publicized and assuming anybody is welcome to come from the public and from the middle and high schools? So that's my question. My comment is, the purpose of this task force is to make recommendations. And in response to both Patty and Jeremy, maybe one of the recommendations we make is that we need more expert guidance and input or that we need more time. So I don't think anything in the purpose is saying we have to come up with recommendations regarding next steps. And I think it opens up the opportunity for conversations and involves members of the school communities to provide their input. So that's my comment. If you could answer that question.
The meetings will be open. I haven't publicized them yet.
Thank you.
Yes, Jeremy?
If you would look, DeeDee, you may be right. I think that's a great, elegant solution. But if you look at bullet point 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on task force guiding principles, yeah, we need to make decisions this summer due to pending bond projects. I guess your point is still taken. We've, well, taken. The decision could be that we're going to put off pending bond.
Well, and the task force does not make decisions. So we could recommend, based on our discussions, that maybe that's not possible. And that would be a recommendation that we do.
I think all those would be open.
Yes. Recommendations are just that, recommendations.
I guess then...
Go ahead, Jeremy. I have another hand at the moment.
I guess then, in the spirit of being transparent, I would add under task force guiding principles, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, a seventh bullet point that says, we need to understand that the task force has a variety of options that can include, that may include the following. One, to recommend a greater task force be created. Two, to recommend further study sessions and parent and community meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Do you follow my drift?
Would be an open-ended list of options, I would assume.
It would be. But I would, I would want people coming in to know in black and white, literally, that one of the options is that the task force may also has the option to not make decisions, to decide that the problem, and it is a problem, is too big for this particular elementary school task force and to recommend a larger forum. Does that make sense?
I would assume all possible recommendations would be open. The facilitator, I have good faith in Lisa Fraser. I've worked with her before. And having seen her facilitator meetings, I have confidence that that type of frame would be offered. Don't you think, Chris? Oh, I think Sheila was next, Patty. Sheila, go ahead with your question or comment.
I just wanted to clarify, if I'm right. How we got here is that we were discussing and working with the problems that we're having at elementary level and the financial problems. And we came up with what we felt might be a good solution. So not everybody involved thinks of good solution, which is kind of how life goes. I am of the assumption that we set up the task force as a way to respond to this not being the solution that it would want to be.
We'd like to, we'd like to make it open to looking at other solutions.
Right. So that, I think that DeeDee's point is well-taken, which is, if what happened as a result of four sessions that we can fit in for a year is that we thought, well, we might have been wrong or we were right, but we need to think about it this way. We're not closing up, we're not making a decision and stopping. We're, if we needed a larger committee or if we needed to look at it differently, we would. But I have to say, having lived through the natural bridges situation, I'm not entirely convinced that having a large, let's bring everybody from the whole community into this. And it's been, what, it's been six months? Is necessarily the better one? Sorry. Okay. That that is necessarily the best way to look at the problem we started. So I just wanted to make sure I was right in terms of that we're not closing this off, but rather starting here and then moving forward.
Any other comments from the board before we go to public comment?
I was the vice president of the teachers' union when natural bridges and brass 40 elementary was closed. And I can assure you it was ugly, contentious, almost riotously so. However, it was open, which is what we need to be. Remember how this is coming into being. It's coming into being that the board, and I was not at the meeting, voted to make a move of a school without consulting the school. That being said, a recommendation.
Well, we'll go back to the record on that, but since you weren't there.
Then I guess that didn't happen. I'm truly confused. We will seek guidance in that area. However, I think it does behoove us to be open about this. And so in the spirit of that, I come back to the idea that limiting this to just elementary doesn't work for me at least. So I can't support this. I think it needs to be opened so that all options can be put on the table. It is going to be messy, but declining enrollment is messy. And I'd rather have mess and some contention, but be open about it. I'm not implying that a school needs to be closed. That's not my implication. But I do think, because the issue isn't going anywhere, that we open up this discussion and we let sort of everybody in. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We appreciate your part in the comment.
Philosophically, that's what works.
We appreciate that.
And I appreciate you saying that, whether or not you agree or not.
No, you do appreciate it.
Well, and I appreciate it.
DeeDee, then Patty, Claudia.
I'm running the numbers. And it looks like we have at least 38 individuals on this task force as it is.
It's a lot of people.
It's a lot of folks. And these are going to be open meetings. And I would encourage anyone from the community that has some input or ideas to attend. And again, we have a recommendation. The principals are the principals. They are information that we need to take into consideration as we make our recommendations. But our charge is to make recommendations to the superintendent. What those recommendations are is up to the task force.
Thank you.
Claudia, did you want to weigh in and come back with that? I thought starting with elementary is a good place. I think this is what our concern is right now. We're looking at elementary declining enrollment. So this, I think, should be our focus right now. And I think the larger the group, the harder it will be to, you know, to get some consensus to move forward.
Thank you. Ben?
So maybe I wasn't as clear as I wanted to be. It wasn't about opening the group or making the numbers I watched. It was who do we reach out to was basically where I was coming from. I don't expect my plumber to solve my hair problem. So, you know, I mean, I think along those lines I've been trying to make light because I think Jeremy's right. But more so, I just really want to have the board consider that this is a district problem. I'm counting to have a starting point. I have no problem with it. 38 sounds like the facilitator will have their hands full. I'm glad that they're open. But I am putting that out there for the board to really consider that everything that we do within the district is out of one budget and in total no effect. And if we can really go back to what Heather was just talking about in the depth of the problem, think about, there might be solutions we never thought about. And our problems are so different than just two decades ago. You know, we're in a different world and a different landscape. And I really think we can get there. But it probably isn't going to be pretty. Everyone might be a little exhausted. We're going to be sad because we're going to live with each other because we're a small community. So where, I don't know that there are professional people who have been looking at these numbers that could really help us in the bigger picture. So I'm hoping that, not right at this moment, that we as a board, I wanted to plant that seed. Because when we were charged with our last district in peace, it was quick, and that was six months. And to have somebody who was neutral, who understood, who could say on the horizon, this is what we know for fact. This is how it's impacted. It worked for your community, have your community weigh in. But this is what we know. Because the district itself is so kind of solid within. I'm just putting it out there. And I really, I really just want what's best for kids. And it's going to get messy because it's going to get messy. So, and I, you know what?
We want, this list represents a lot of creative thinkers, very, very well experienced people. Sheila, perhaps a final comment from the board before we go to the public?
Well, I also do want to, I want to say, because I also want the public to know, this is not the first time we've talked about this. This is not the first awareness we have that our district is going down. And that we, and we know that what is coming is going to be a secondary school problem. Right now, we're at the elementary school problem. And that seems big enough and frankly, messy enough. If you're experiencing anything like mine the last couple of weeks, you know, I learned exactly how complicated all these things are from people in the community who brought their thoughts to it. So I agree that we don't want to decide for Saudi that we're going to fix it. But I also don't think that's really, I think that DeeDee's right, that this is really a start place and that we're keeping a very open mind. That's how we've been doing it.
Jeremy?
I do have to say, I can't vote for this. I think we're...
Yeah, it's not an action that I just...
I understand, but I, I...
Can't support it, is what you're saying.
I don't support this. I think doing it piecemeal is wrong. I think in retrospect, we should have thought about, hindsight is always 20/20, but we should have thought about district office moves. We need to think about, so we need to think about that again. We need to think about elementary, middle school, high school, the whole thing. And that thinking about it in a holistic way will yield the best result philosophically.
Understood.
Thank you for that.
And the board also had time to comment further after public comment. So at this time, we would like to turn to the public for their thoughts and comments. And we try to limit that to 15 minutes per subject. If you can respect that, we would appreciate it. If that's not possible, we're also flexible. Any speaker who would like to address the board would have three minutes. And Molly is our timekeeper, and you can see above the clock. So if anybody would like to address the board regarding this topic, please come forward. And if you could speak clearly, we would appreciate that. And there's also a place to include your contact information at reporting in case you would like follow-up from the superintendent. We make that easier. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is DeeDee. First, I submitted a letter, so I don't want to go into detail and read it. Hopefully you all got it. I just sent it this afternoon. I have printed copies if it would be helpful to anyone. I'd be glad to have it to you. I wanted to thank you, Superintendent Muro, for taking the time to meet with us and board members for taking the time to meet with us. And here are our concerns. We pushed to have a task force. We didn't call it a task force, but, so we're excited to be able to work on that. We do have some big concerns with the most recent version of the layout of the task force that we received last night. So I did put that in the email to you. And the biggest concern we have is the process of having this happen over three days, actually over six hours. Three meetings in the course of a month, week one after the other, after the other. As some of you have said, natural bridges. You started out saying, we're going to close it. The community didn't like that. You had a process. It took a year. You came back to the same decision. Was that a waste of time? No, it wasn't, because... No, it wasn't because it was public and the public weighed in. I worked for the water department in the city. We had a great idea of something called D-SAL, and it would have worked, and it would have addressed our water problems. But our committee did not feel that that was a public process. And they came to us and they told us that they did not feel that was a public process. And they went through their elected officials and they told them that. And the director, Elkofer, at the time, could have said, I don't care. It's my decision to make. But the elected official said, no, it's not. We want this process. And you know what? They spent a year and they came up with a whole set of different alternatives, and they also worked. So yes, some of the suggestions that have already been made may work. Having four over three days may work, but it's really not going to give you the answers. You need to make smart decisions. It's not going to respect the community that dedicates our time because we care about education, we care about the process, and we care about our community and really the future of our community. And doing it in three days is going to leave a really sour taste in our mouth. So we hope we reconsider the fact that giving us a day to come up with some brainstorming and another day to pick away at them without any data to back them, unless Patrick's ready to be working really hard that week to get all the data that was requested, I don't think that's going to happen. And it's really not fair, and it's really not, really not going to be an effective task force if you do it that way. So I hope you take time to read this letter and I'm going to pass this on to the next person. And thank you again for hearing with me. And I would hope that you will reach out to me if you have any questions. I'm not going to take time to write my name here, but you have my email address. So thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much.
Hello.
Not on, no. It's too green.
No, it's not. Hello? Yes. Okay. Hello. My name is Tim Woodland, and I'm a teacher at Coast to Noah High School. I'm going to read what I'm going to say. All programs that make up the Bransporti Small Schools campus have worked together for many years to build well-being, safety, and community through multi-age, innovative curriculum, shared activities, and daily interactions. The board may not understand the impact of removing a program from our campus. The Coast to Noah High School students in the CTE ag production class plan and implement the Life Lab Garden Program for all the Monarch Community students throughout the school year. Over the last several years, the schools have established a robust buddy program in which students from both schools work together several times a month. Coast to Noah students in the CTE Introduction to Early Childhood Education class push into Monarch classrooms two times a week to lead small groups, work one-on-one, and assist classroom teachers during math. They also help run an after-school childcare program for working Monarch parents. I can respect the enormous job of the school board to address the declining enrollment in the entire district while wrestling with and making sure decisions are made that are transparent, inclusive, and equitable for all students. The process so far has not been transparent or inclusive. It's distressing that other elementary schools do not know about this process. I have talked to a couple elementary teachers in the district that had no idea that these things were being proposed. Ultimately, the BSSC campus allows for innovation and cooperation often missing in larger learning communities. Our shared philosophy, campus resources, certificated staff, library, and integrated programs improve and inspire all involved. As stated and mandated, our campus goal is to serve the most fragile populations in our district. Having a purposeful, supportive, multi-age infrastructure in place ensures the safety and security of all our students. I'm going to end with some quotes from the Coast to Noah students that were told that the Monarch students may leave the campus. First, "Without the younger kids here, I think there would be more effects." Next, "Without the kids, it would feel different, weird. It would, if they weren't here, we would just be a bunch of moody teenagers." Next quote, "Their happiness makes me happy." And lastly, "When I see the Monarch kids on the playground, it gives me hope."
Did you mean everyone? No? Hello? One, two. Hi, everyone. My name is Paul Danta. I'm a parent of twins in the first grade at Monarch. I'm here today to talk to you about my request to be part of the task force and what that might entail, also to talk about some information I think is critical for the task force to be effective in any form. And I want to take into account what you said earlier on around the size of task forces and the timeline that we're against. I agree with many of the statements that you made. And in order for the task force to be viable and to assess viable options that are available to us in any form that it takes, and in the spirit of the collaboration and transparency that this initiative was born from, there are many key pieces of information that I believe we're required, which we don't have today. This information is needed as soon as possible so the task force has validity, and any recommendations can stand up to the rigor I expect the board and the public would demand. Of course, getting the head start on homework is never a bad thing, right? The interest of the public is that any decision is based on logic. There should be a body of evidence, and nothing should be done based on conjecture. So while there are many factors that need to be considered, I would like to ensure that we address the most fundamental of these, the bottom line. Everything ultimately always comes down to cost, right? The information that would be given to date has been quite vague. We've had a very high-level budget overview to look at, and we've had enrollment data. The most creative solution I can come up with in regards to enrollment data is procreation. So I suggest we need a little bit more to go on if we're going to be successful in any endeavor that we undertake. So the task force took a second.
You can say that, we can.
I'm here tonight playing the role of John O'Hara. So with that in mind, I request the following information to facilitate the effectiveness of whatever we do next. I believe that we need to see existing budgets for each school involved in the task force for this year and other years that have been projected. I think the analysis by each school is critical. I believe we need to see a roll-up budget of the district budget based on all of those bottom-up budget proposals from each of the elementary schools. I believe we need to see historic budget data for comparison, budget which is actual spend. I believe critically, we need to understand the target spend goal that has been set by you to ensure that over the next three to five years, the district can ensure it meets its budget goals and meets its reserve requirements against the declining enrollment numbers. I believe we need to also see any identified cost savings that have been currently or previously proposed in order to solve this problem. I would imagine, and I run out of time, I would imagine that we need to do this because in my day job, we do this constantly in terms of budget analysis, and I would expect that to be shared. I would like to see impact analysis of those cost savings on the roll-up budget. I'd expect to see any cost of integration data either planned or from, in terms of what was tabled for Monarch, or any proposal for any other historic instances where schools have been merged or moved, so we can understand the true implications of the costs that's required. For enrollment, we need to see outside of the new projections, previous enrollment data, so we can look at actuals against the past five years, so we can judge the accuracy of those projections. I believe we need to see a breakdown of the enrollment data against each of the defined areas that little neighborhood schools need to serve. For the bond, given that's a huge part of this, I believe we also need to see the contract that's between the developer and the district, so we can understand the implications, both in terms of costs and penalties that may be incurred by anything that we do and any decision we make. Unless we have any of this information, I believe we cannot proceed as a task force because we will be making a blind decision, and we will not understand the implications of the things that we do, both to individual schools and also to San Fruze in general. I've compiled a list of these questions. There's also a worksheet for everybody to go through, so you can compile them. And I'm going to send out an answer.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Savannah. I talked to you last time, too. I wanted to thank you guys so much for taking the time to hear our concerns tonight. Being able to participate in meaningful way by meeting with board members, by working on this process has really motivated our community, and we thank you for that. We trust that engaging the community and making sure all voices are heard is important to the district administration and the school board as it is to us. You've heard our request for small changes in the task force makeup and the financial documents that we're requesting. And additionally, the first proposal for the task force stated that it report back to the board that I saw. And last night, we received an update that it was going to report back to the superintendent. So this and the timeframe of the short meetings has us feeling a little bit like we, like it's not, our input is not going to be felt and heard. So we would like to make a modification to that makeup of the, to the elementary task force for declining enrollment. We submitted our small modifications to you that says that it reports back to the board and for a vote of some kind. And so, sorry, I'm trying to get the time, get you. So here we go. We want to believe in the positive intent behind this process. To find a solution to a clearly stated problem with a thoughtful process, the task force can work together as a group to come up with a recommendation to the board that meets all the stated requirements. This cannot be done without the information we have requested, and we're moving forward with you in good faith that we will receive it. In working with you on the task force, we understand we will make recommendations, but also you have a responsibility as elected officials to provide direction on major decisions to the superintendent of decisions like this. So thank you very much, and the board, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi. My name is Nam Wahara, and I am a longtime parent of two AFE students. And there are just a couple of things I wanted to add. For the task force moving forward, AFE is, as you guys know, is a homeschool program. We are so different from everything else out there. And I think it's really important that, I don't think it's possible for one parent and one staff person to come and have any of that understanding for the other members of the task force. I would like to see the ability for us to write something or to have some kind of presentation of what is actually important to us, because when these decisions have been made, Monarch's been really active and connected and trying to get across to you what's important to you. But I haven't really seen any of that kind of communication come from AFE or be asked or, and my assumption is that because homeschooling is so misunderstood in the way that our program works, I would be surprised if anybody on this board has a reasonable understanding of it. We have some needs that aren't met by just moving us into the other building. I would like those to be heard and appreciated. And then the other thing I wanted to address is that, for example, when we had the opportunity to design buildings for our campus, we didn't just put everything in one building. We had designed separate buildings with a courtyard, and having that outdoor space is really important. Our resource center is really important. And we have kind of designed the insights to meet, which are different and beyond just a square box classroom. And I wanted to present the concept that having those buildings actually may add flexibility in the future. There's a lot of stuff, we don't know what's happening. We don't know what's going to happen with the census data, you know, where their lines not need to be redrawn or whatever. There's a whole bunch of legislation going through pretty quick and well at the state right now that is going to eliminate or reduce strongly all charter schools and charter possibilities. So we do have the possibility that one of the ways we can work towards enrollment is to recapture those students after, over time, if those programs are in fact asked. And so having, what I'm hearing is that having this facility, having an extra facility is a problem, and it could actually be a benefit. We have the money and the bond for it. And I don't see that same argument about natural bridges getting all the money put into it just so it can be rented out to a private school. So I'd like to pose that idea that having the buildings isn't necessarily, it adds a lot of flexibility to the future. And so since there's so much stuff that we don't know, it's not necessarily a bad outcome. Thank you very much.
We reached our tentative timeframe for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board beyond the time allocated? We could stretch it a little bit.
I just want everyone to raise their hand if they're with BSSC.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance here and your comments. Definitely enriching the conversation and the planning of the superintendent's task force. We also have an opportunity for final comments from the board before moving to our study session on the budget. Claudia, do you?
I want to thank all of you for being here. It's really important to be the committed parents that you are and...
A little louder.
Okay. I want to thank you all for being here. Really appreciate you all for being the committed parents that you are and to be willing to work together with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Harry?
Yeah, so we're not voting on this. We're simply, I want to use my therapy, we're simply agreeing as board to the, to this process that's being proposed. I'm not exactly sure what our role is if we're not voting on it.
Well, I'll have to turn it over to the superintendent, but my understanding is our superintendent has decided to convene a task force, which is within her administrative options.
Would it not be within my purview to decide whether I think the makeup of the task force is appropriate?
Well, my understanding would be certainly any board member could suggest to the superintendent any changes that you would like to see in her task force. But basically, the superintendent has the authority and is thinking it's the best planning option to put together a task force. And certainly, she's our superintendent. She'll listen to us, and she might agree or might not, might change something or might not, but certainly our prerogative to suggest. Would that be accurate? But we're not voting on this. The superintendent's task force, the recommendations will be brought to her, and at some point, she will bring reports and recommendations back to us in terms of bond and...
Well, then I would, even if I'm the only person on the board in opposition, I would ask if there are any other board members who have really philosophical objections to the way we're proceeding. And I worry that as, I think many of the speakers have suggested very politely, and I appreciate that, we're really, by rushing this, digging ourselves into a deeper hole than we're already in, and we'll simply need to excavate further. I think this is ill-advised, with all due respect to our very hard-working and intelligent superintendent, and I think this needs to go back to the drawing board personally. But if none of my other colleagues agree, that's their prerogative.
That's right. Seven hours...
Philosophically, would you agree to it again?
Six of us here will go down and get further comment. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're very welcome.
DeeDee, do you have any further comment?
I really welcome this as an opportunity to begin discussions and to... I really welcome this as an opportunity to begin discussions and to be transparent and to have input from the different representatives on the task force. So I'm in favor of this as the beginning of a process. We may figure it all out in three meetings. We may not. And I think the charge for this task force is open enough for the task force to decide if they need more information, they need more data, they need an expert, they need more time. It's within their purview to make those kind of recommendations.
As people will be on the task force.
That's right. You'll both be there. Thank you. Very good discussion. Thank you, Betty.
Well, Jeremy, you know...
I'm paying. Okay.
My concern is twofold. One is process. And for me, when initially this came forward, I understand the superintendent wanting forward thinking about foreign projects and had an idea which I very narrowly thought about. But upon hearing just one part of our much larger community, it occurred to me that this is an issue I think that, yes, it is a starting point, but I can concur with you, Jeremy, that I don't necessarily believe this is the right starting point. I think we need a much larger overview of, an assessment of what our district is. So right now, we're talking about one campus in declining enrollment, looking for a solution that continues to keep them there. But we have 10, 12, we have several buildings and I'm sorry that I can't, I'm a fly, tell you exactly how to count them out. We have buildings that are not necessarily schools right now but are part of our public domain. So I think that there could be incredible solutions to meet the needs of the community. It may not look anything like we are now. It may seem disruptive, but our approach to a 21st century problem with the 20th century movement, that's why I just brought up that up and down the state, there are people that do this and listening to Mr. Paul Dantner asking for very specifics. This is a short timeframe. I think these specifics are going to carry over to the entirety of the district. So I respectfully hear what we're saying as a board. Those of you who want to just run at this point, I really think that's, we're just spinning some wheels right there.
Final comment from Sheila, then we'll have a comment from the superintendent, and then we'll move on to a short break and then on to our budget study session. Thank you.
I was thinking that I would really like to speak to the community that came out tonight. It doesn't surprise me that so many of you came. It doesn't surprise me the passion and the intellect that I've heard and the people that have talked to me over this period of time. I worked at Monarch School. I used to teach at Loma Prieta. I was a psychologist for Costa Noah, for AFE. I know the school and the community very well. So you're like, "Well, why do you want to do this then?" Well, I want to say that my only concern is that what people are saying makes it sound like you think that we're just going to decide to close you down or shove you in a corner somewhere. And I know that I have no intention of any of that happening. I think that Monarch and Costa Noah and Loma Prieta before it and AFE all came out of people not having tons and tons of data and having figured everything else out, but people having a dream and an idea and taking a chance with the idea. And I would say rightly or wrongly, when we thought of this, we thought of it as not like, "Oh, we could shove them in here," but rather as, "This might really be something." We can be wrong. We could be right and you could be wrong. Or, you know, any combination of the above. You know, I don't feel like my mind is made up and closed. I don't think anybody on this board is that way. So I think that if you can give us a little room and a little trust, I think that we are looking into this. We're looking into our idea and we're looking into the problem and what this community, what the people that are on this task force can tell us are going to help us with the question of, well, we've really gone down a bad path for, well, we had a good idea, but now we've got some problems we have to resolve. So I think I just want to talk to all of you because I know a lot of you and because I know the depths of your feelings. Well, we have, we have that in every school. We have that with every population. And we're trying to figure out a way to start to resolve what's happening with our community shrinking. So that's all. I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate you coming. I appreciate everything. I learned so much from spending a very long, uncocky disease just the other day. And I've talked to a lot of other people. I learned a lot. I learned to think about it. And I will say that I was so passionate of my idea at the beginning that there were a lot of things that I didn't say, but wait a minute, I should think of this and that. So, you know, have some faith that we are going to be doing that. This is not a decision that we will make in a short period of time if it's not made. It's just one of many things.
Looking for productive processes, certainly. Thank you, Sheila. And do you have final comments, Chris, before you go?
And I want to say, there's no guarantee that the resolution's going to even involve small schools when it's all said and done. You know, we are going to look at all kinds of possibilities. I believe there'll be solutions in the room. And we can look at, you know, how do we make this plan? I do want to clarify for Paul though. This is about facilities far more than this is about finance. This is about the use of public facilities and public resources, much more than it is about budget. We can provide all that budget information, but really it's about what is the capacity of a school site? What does it take to run a school site? And how do we use those resources well?
How much does it cost?
And we can share all that information.
Thank you.
But it's less, and our district budget is way more complex than just site budgets because we have student services programs and special education programs and other things that are district-wide that aren't going to be reflected in a single school budget. So it's very complex. We can share that, but it is much more about how do we use facilities well? And those facilities building resources.
Thank you again for being here. If there are further questions, they can be sent to the superintendent. In the interest of time, we're going to take a short break and reconfigure the room. Again, the budget study session is open to the public, although it's not a public participation process. The board will take a 10-minute break while convening a budget study session. With many, many thanks, I want to say, and thank you for being here for tonight and figuring through issues with us.